Okay, we need a motion, members, to reconvene, open session. Angie, and second, Renee. All in favor of reconvening? Okay, very good. We'd like to welcome all of you to our meeting this evening, and we would love it if you stood with us to say goodbye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, we have some recognitions this evening, and I think Dr. Petrie is going to take care of those tonight.
I'm gonna brag on the school board, which doesn't happen very often, but we were recognized at the legis-- or at the awards banquet in June for the receiving of the governance scheme award, and to my knowledge, it's been many, many years before the board has done that. And for that to happen, every single one of us had at least gone through essential training. There have been three of us that have gone beyond that. Lisa Welker was recognized as Rose Rod Cruz as an advanced level. And the third level is masters level, and one of us has had that. But the focus of this is professional development, so it's not just the required training, but many of us have gone beyond that, additional attending of conferences to learn, so professional development and board, because crossing over the line from even the classroom, the normal citizen, this is a whole different ballgame than I thought I was referred for. But advocacy at the State Department with legislators, Congress, the House, is an important part of this. Many of us make contact with our legislators when there's important issues affecting public education and attending regional meetings, et cetera. So, we're there for you guys. Thank you.
Should I kiss it and hold it up? Let every board member take a home?
Oh, yes!
I don't think it's alright? Okay, I don't think we'll have to do that. Okay, um, our next recognition has to do with donations that were given to the food service.
Yes, we have received over...
Nine hundred dollars.
Nine hundred dollars from local community members, like local churches, businesses, parents, retired teachers, and this nine hundred dollars is used to help pay for...
Student lunches.
Student lunches.
So, we were able to help 144 kids over the year by doing that.
So, Ms. Jackson just wanted to thank the community, and as she talked, it was an honor for our district to be surrounded by so many giving and caring people, and thank them so much. Thank you, George.
That's great. Okay, we do not have any visitors signed up to address the board this evening, so we'll jump right ahead then. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda. Angie. Any discussion about any of those items? Any questions, concerns? Alright, so we'll take a vote then to approve all the items on the consent agenda. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion carries. Moving on, we'll start with reports. We'll hear from Director Bess for facility and grants.
Pretty well, as we go through July and everything, as everybody knows, we're pretty well into cling, summer clingy mode and so forth, so I was just gonna show you a few things. I think Darren has a video he's gonna bring up here shortly for us, but pretty well, basically, we're just in the clingy mode right now, trying to get things looking nice for us to get ready to go into August for bringing our students and staff back. So, we're kinda excited about that. We're working on some landscaping issues. All the building complexes are coming along really well with the construction part, we've got landscaping going on, the paving for the junior high, and the high schools will be started here pretty soon. I believe the high school, actually, they're gonna wait till about the 17th or start it, around that. Actually, junior high's gonna be starting probably in the end of next week. So, we'll start seeing that being redone and get them updated as well. The year, basically, we're, which kinda sides us with kind of the need coming up for the new year, as we get into the waxing and so forth, we work with Buckeye all our waxes, they're all water-based waxes, so they look really clear, first of all. But we actually gonna put, they're using, put microband in the wax. Now, for the ones that may not know what microband actually does, it's actually a chemical that actually helps get rid of the bacteria and stuff that we have. So, basically, it'll help cut down the sickness and stuff like that in within the building. So, we're kinda excited to see how that unfolds out, but this is down, they're probably one of the very key companies that actually build and mix it into their waxes to help us actually keep the sickness hopefully down in our school districts. So, pretty interesting concept to do that. So, anyway, I think that we're just basically working on trying to get our buildings looking nice, we're getting ready to, next week, we get to do the high school, which will be fun, that's our vacation week for most people, which is nice, but you're gonna love it when we get done, so we did the whole bottom floor, looks really great, and we did get the junior high gym floor done, it's great, we're gonna show you a picture in a minute, but they did get that pretty well done, they got a couple more coats of clear finish to put on it, but we're gonna show you a real quick clip on that, see what that looks like. But a lot of exciting things going on with getting ready for this coming year, so we're pretty excited. Can you bring that up there? We started pretty quickly, crazy what's taking place during the day during the elementary This is the junior high four, and this one is like... So, it looks really good, and we're pretty excited, so we got a lot of neat stuff going on in the area, and so we're all looking forward to it, and again, Mr. Health, with help with Mr. Whitehead and administration and everything, they've done a great job organizing and getting that fence area set up, so a little bit more, we're getting ready to do a final walkthrough with the punch list, probably around July 9th, and we should be able to finish it up, and it'll be ready for operations in August. We're pretty excited. Alright, any questions or anyone? If not, thank you, have a good holiday, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to the technical junior four.
Good evening, we completed 126 log orders in this last timeframe, summer school, we had to move 14 sets of promos from the intermediate, thanks to Scott for letting us borrow them, to the primaries so that those teachers could use promos for summer, and we had to turn around and go back over to the intermediate when summer school was done. We're working on updating PCs, all the Windows 7 machines, we have to update to Windows 10, Windows 7, and it might as well be in January 2020, and it no longer provides security updates, we have to secure that. And the last thing we're doing is we're working on a lot of summer projects, moving a lot of PCs around, tabling and installation. Any questions?
Last board report.
Darren takes the next one.
Alright, so we'll move on then to the financial report from Kelly.
You can see from my graphs, we are continuing to trend exactly like we have before, our lines are following. I think we will end the year a little better than what was in my preliminary budget, I'm hoping, close to 15, once I get everything all entered, so right in that area, is what I expect, I guess. So, I'll update you again next month on that. So, as far as the financial statement goes, down the next with the graph, I mean, if you wanna look at numbers, you can see that we're trending exactly, pretty right on track with where we did last year, so that's good. I don't have a lot else to add, except that auditors were onsite, I guess, two weeks ago, and they started looking through everything, just the typical things that they do, they did a sampling of our AP checks, our payroll checks, direct deposits, they looked at contracts and conjunction when to pay stuff, so that they can verify all the payments are being made properly, they looked through all our legal stuff, just new leases, new agreements, things like that. So, we look forward to them being onsite in September, so it's a full-blown audit, this was just a one-day thing, so you will be getting confirmations in the mail, you might have already gotten them. Did you? I bet they're coming, in the next few days. Doctor Isaacson was a little bit like, "What, I got a letter that I signed to myself?" They have to do that, they have to do it.
She was wasting money.
Like, they have to do it, so anyways, if you can get those filled out and back to them sometime in the summer, that would be good. We will have a new auditor on staff with us when, in the, in September, our current auditor had, is gonna go over to Jeff Crown, who controls it, so it's a great opportunity for him. Anyway, I know that you had talked before about wanting maybe somebody different leading the audit, so that change, yeah, so we will get that since fall, that'll be good. Other than that, I don't have much, but my budget is a little bit later in the, in the new business, so give me questions for me?
Alright, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. There is, we do not have any unfinished business at this time, so we'll forward ahead and get started with new business. And the first item has to do with, we wanna have a discussion and consider the bids that were submitted for the Highway A property, and before we do that, I think Dr. Isaacson has some things he wants to share as far as an appraisal and what the bids were and so forth.
Yeah, so we received three bids for the 55 acres out on Highway A, those bids being from Ronald Development, 223,560, with a contingency to do some soil samples and such, with a closing date of 150 days approximately. Stoli Properties for 324,000, with a closing date of July 30th, and the high bidder was Bridal Creek Properties at $400,000 and one, 401,000 and $1,000, with a closing date of July 18th, with no contingencies. When we received of these bids, quite frankly, they were lower than what we had hoped, but we wanted, in order to make a decision as to what to do and proceed, we ordered an appraisal on that property in order to determine, what's the fair value today? And as we know, what we had paid for it back in the mid-2000s, and at that point, it was about $1.5 million. The appraisal, and I have the, here is, and I'll read it to you, so we have the version, "Dear Dr. Isaacson, this is from Todd Real Estate Services," dated today, June 27th. "Dear Dr. Isaacson, in response to your request, I have concluded the required investigation, gathered the necessary data, and made certain analysis that have enabled me to form an opinion of the market value of the fee simple interest in the 55.89 plus or minus acre tract owned by the Hillsborough R3 School District and located along Highway A and Sandy Valley Road in Hillsborough Reserve. Based on inspection of the property and investigation analysis undertaken, I form the following opinions, subject to the assumptions and limiting conditions set forth in this report. I estimate the market value of the fee simple interest of the property, subject property as of June 24th, to be in the $450,000 to $560,000 range. It should be noted that this value would require a marketing time of six to 12 months, and the net to the seller after paying commission would fall in the $405,000 to $520,800 range. The term market value can be briefly described as the most probable price which a property should bring in a competitive and multiple market, under all conditions requisite to a fair sale, the buyer and seller acting prudently and knowledgeably, assuming price is not affected by undue stimulus. A full definition of market value is included in this report. The report consists of the letter outlining the services performed, and our conclusions of value, a statement of facts and limiting conditions, narrative sections briefly describing the data pertinent to the valuation description of the area, neighborhood and property, and the applicable approach to value, an exhibit section with supplemental data pertinent to the whole report. This restricted appraisal report set forth only the appraiser's conclusions, the client is the sole intended user of this report, copy of this report, along with the detailed working papers, including square documentation, from which ill-adapted parent is retained in the appraiser's file, respectfully submitted to Stephen Alptod. Some of the items in discussing that I would like to make mention is kind of, I asked, like, how did we come to that conclusion on value, just for, to be able to share with the board? Some of the things with that acreage that we talked about was our property, that amount of acreage, the buyers, is somewhat finite, typically related to builders and developers, could be a person that wanted to build a single home, or maybe a neighboring property or something of that nature, a builder that wanted to do one or two acre sites. One of the things that we talked about was the bidding process, you know, versus going out with the realtor and such, we kinda talked about that as far as if we had contacted different builders. I think the bidding process was the right way to do that, because who do you contact? You know, there could be a builder in St. Charles that could call you, "Why do you call me? I would've paid $450,000 or $500,000." In order to be a school district, to be transparent, I think we have to do that, do it the way in which we did. John Isaacson owns the property, I'm probably calling around. So, we talked about listing it with the agent, I asked those different questions, and how to best go about that, and he had listed that with some of that information in there, about six to 12 months for the testing and such, soil samples and whatnot, typically that's gonna come along with a developer wanting to do those. One of the things in within here that he looked at as far as comparables, in the number where he adds, talked about, on the high end, he said it would be, that property is not valued over $10,000 in this, in the current market. Using some comparables, there were some in the, within the R7 area, that 32 acres had sold for $10,000 an acre, and 38 acres had sold for about $10,995, little smaller parcels, but one of the main kickers that they had was access to sewer. Our property on Highway A does not have access to sewer, and how it's zoned, you're gonna end up having to put in a sewage treatment plant, which is important for us as we think about in the future, for both the buyer and/or us, what we would do with that property, right now, the cost for a treatment plant, as he had done some checking on that, was $350,000 to $400,000, to add into that. So, that, that has that impact on value when somebody's looking to purchase our properties, like a developer or some, depending on the price what they pay for, you gotta add, you gotta have sewer. And so, that impacts the cost of what somebody's gonna be willing to pay, because of what they're gonna have to pay to get that done. We talked, he talked about on the low end, the $8,000 an acre, would be kind of on that low end, but when you, we talk, he had mentioned in the report, looking at, that's a six-month to a one-year marketing time, the time you list it, run through the testing, or whatever, until closing. Somewhere in that period of time, and the typical commission on land being seven to 10%, and so, I think that's where, he had put that in his letter for clarity, is really the net between what is being offered at that $400,000, isn't that great? The net would not be that great, listing it and getting a higher amount. So, that's the information on there, and so, really, the decisions kind of before the board are, number one, do we sell the property now? And that is the current market value, in a market that's fairly strong. If we don't sell it now, that is probably, realistically, you're holding it on until the next market cycle, you know, as that goes, whatever time that may be, probably not the next year or two, probably on five, five to 10 years. To get to the 1.5 original that we paid, that's gonna be a significant amount of time, I would imagine, based on where that value is. So, that's a, we have Bridal Creek Properties, the high bid, a $401,000, he would like to close on the 18th, has submitted all the escrow accounts, or the $3,000, et cetera, so that is the highest of those bids.
So, we'll propose, I need a motion then, to accept the bid from Bridal Creek Properties for $400,001, with no contingencies, and a closing date on July 18th, 2019.
I just take the vote.
Thank you, John. And a second, Renee. Any discussion?
They're always gonna think of that, and it's just a question of what we can get out of it now, or we hold on to it forever. You know, $400,000 is really close to the low end of what he listed with an agent.
Right. Well, with...
And the wheel, the wheel kicker is the six to 12 months, that's what makes it for me, you know, that six to 12 month wait, yeah, that's a killer, you lose a lot of money just waiting, time value there.
Well, and if somebody finds it now, who knows when another bid will come along? So, I'm assuming Bridal Creek is a developer, or a subdivision developer? Do you know that? I mean, they're out of St. Jen.
Yes, oh, they're out of St. Jen. Attention Todd Bowman.
Bowman.
And so, okay. So, I think St. Jen, but I think that there may be some ties to the...
Okay.
I don't know the, I don't know the intent of what happened.
I wonder if they're interested. I wonder if you take into consideration what it would cost for sewer, to get the progress and get it, you know, if you were to add that in, if you were to provide that, would you back up to $700,000 and so? It is in line. Right, and if it's related for real estate agents, too, we lose with their commission. Alright, any comments then? Okay, the motion is on the floor, okay?
The proceeds from this, the one thing with the bond language, is before, accepting this, the $400,000 has to be used for capital improvement that benefit the district through, you know, position or whatnot, it has to be, capital can't be salaries or anything.
Okay, thank you for that. So, the motion is to accept the bid from Bridal Creek Properties for $400,001, all in favor? Alright, motion carries then. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda moves us to the science curriculum. So, I need a motion to approve the science curriculum as presented. Thank you, Angie.
Second.
Okay, second is Beth. Any discussion, questions for Mr. Silverberg?
Well, I, I did have a sticking point with the, the climate change part, and not that I'm opposed to putting that idea out there in a curriculum, it's just that, the way it's presented, I fear we're looking at something that's being presented more as a, you know, a proven fact as opposed to a hypothesis, you know? We've had a lot of that trouble in science circles lately, I mean, a lot of it's gotten very political, and there was some things under the climate change thing where it mentioned like Kyoto Protocol, and how nations are, can and are working together to address change, and I thought, well, that's just over political events, those aren't actual science things. So, I just, I like to keep the, I mean, I like the rest of it, you know, I appreciate the work people did on it, I'd really rather keep the politics out and just keep it as straight, okay, this is the idea, this is what people think about the enemy climate change, that sort of, because there's so many different, you know, angles on that topic.
So, is that topic something from the state? It looks to me like it's, it's a sixth grade, the one that we discussed just a moment ago, there's a sixth grade speaker, but without looking into the item specification documents that are also attached to that, what those basically do is explain your standard, and without having that information prior to this, you know, the look, I can't draw conclusions to what it, that, what it implies.
Yeah, and so what?
And also, you also have to remember, just because the standard on that piece of paper does not mention the specific items, science is taught in grade-level spans, meaning if you're not tested, you're tested your fifth grade and eighth grade, but in eighth grade, you're tested over sixth, seventh, and eighth grade material. So, just because it may not be presented just in that one standard, that item specification document is linked to that, that all service is talking about.
Yeah, I didn't see, it was mostly in sixth grade that I saw, but I didn't really see it pop up a lot in the later...
Which could've been built from something that also happened in fifth grade, chatted back to fourth grade, building up to something in seventh and eighth grade, it's taught this thing.
I, yeah, I mean, I know it's a little bit of a, I'm sorry it's late in the day to bring this up, but it's, it's one of those things that bothers me, and I'd really rather not, I mean, like I said, there are just so many different angles to that whole topic. It's a, it's a very politic subject, I mean, right now.
I don't know if that's what we testify about, anyway, so, again, I have to, you know, but...
I really...
You're subject to, to be assessed on...
You're subject to be assessed on in one of those standards, and then they, you know, in the eighth grade. And again, without having spoken to the teacher or looked for any of those documents.
And I don't want to throw the baby over the bathwater and say, none of this works because I have a problem with this, but I do have a problem with this. So I don't know how we can work that out. Some way we can either discuss it later on? I don't want to delay the vote per se.
Well, and the other two, I would have to contact the content experts, which are your teachers. To look at that one.
Sure. Wouldn't happen to a standard.
It is a state standard, but if I could ask what, if I dig into the item specification documents and I go look forward and behind in the standards, and then actually speak to the teacher, and ask, that would have been the most...
And that would be way too late to get the curriculum rolling.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know, so this is sort of a cart before the horse, then, for me, like, well...
We're tested on all of these new ideas this year.
Yeah.
Can we ask for the follow-up? After you show interest in them? I would just, if you would email me, if there's specific questions, I can get back to you, it won't be until August. I'm waiting to approve it.
I don't know how to say, you know, I approve with objections, but, you know, that's kind of where I stand on this.
Well, I mean, there's a lot more in that.
Exactly, that's why I mean, I just, you know, but I have to approve it all as one. Sort of problem.
Okay, any other concerns about the curriculum? All right. So we have a motion to approve the science curriculum as presented here now, with follow-up later. Okay. All in favor of approving the science curriculum in the hand? Okay, so that was by, motion carries. Okay, this also moves us into the purchase of the science materials to help implement this curriculum. So, there were several resources that were presented, depending on the course and the grade level. But, a motion to approve the purchase of the science material is needed, and it will total $214,525 in funding.
Plus we're buying the shipping check.
Sure. Give or take.
Give or take. I think I might have...
Our product members. Okay, Angie, thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Renee. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the science curriculum at this cost, give or take? Very much, very good, thank you, by all. Okay, letter D. We need a motion to approve allocating less than 1%, but greater than one-half of 1% of state aid to professional development for 2018, 19? Is that correct? Was it the 18, that should be 1920?
No, 1819.
1819.
So for the year, we're closing out.
Okay, that's what I needed to know, thank you very much. So we need to make sure that date is correct. So the motion is to approve allocating less than 1%, but greater than one-half of 1% of state aid to professional development for 2018, 2019, this is your presentation. Thank you, Angie. And Beth, did I hear you? Any discussion? This is money from the state that we are allocating.
We're required to spend a certain amount.
Right.
However, because a piece of the transportation formula isn't funded at the level that it's supposed to be, we're able to do that. Otherwise, it would be restricted, and it's gonna lower our balances more, and we have a big chunk of restricted monies that we can use, so...
Okay.
It won't affect what we're spending.
Right.
For this year or next year. It just will not allow, yeah, it won't have to be restricted, and with the proxy stuff.
Okay. The boobs, Angie.
Why don't we approve it at the end of the discussion?
I asked them, well, I asked them if there was a certain point in time when it needed to be approved. Because really, I don't submit everything to the state until the end, and... I thought we might as well take advantage of it this year, while we can.
Okay, any other discussion? No question? Okay, so the motion needs to approve allocating this money. All in favor? All right, motion carries, thank you. Letter E has to do with replacing the primary cafeteria dishwasher. Sounds exciting. So I need a motion to approve the Volter, is that right? LLC bid of $14,780, which includes the purchase and installation of the new dishwasher at the primary. Okay? I have a motion about that. Do I have a second? Renee? Thank you. Any discussion about the dishwasher issue?
My question right now was warranty. Was it, when was that, was the warranty on this?
It's only, they're sort of... It's only one year.
I'm sorry, what, one year warranty?
Okay.
Is that standard?
That's the same as what we have at the Junior High, and it's a little smaller dishwasher, but yeah, that is pretty.
Are you staying there? You know, it's doing...
What's the expected life span of them?
I would say 10 years or so. I mean, we, the primary dishwasher has been there since the primary was built.
Built.
So I don't know how long.
It's not been a while. Okay. In the 90s, somewhere.
80s.
The primary was in the 80s?
Uh, no, it was in the 90s.
No, I'm sorry.
It was near when they graduated, so it was probably 92.
Yeah.
But still, that's a long time.
It's a long time for as much usage.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
And this money was budgeted?
Correctly, will be when you're...
It's in my budget.
It's in the budget, that's correct. Okay, any other questions? All right, all they were approving the purchase and installation of this dishwasher. Very good. Next item has to do with our breakfast and lunch prices. And we need a motion to approve a 10-cent increase to school breakfast and lunch prices, beginning with the 1920 school year. 10 cents increase. Did we have a first? Thank you. Beth and Renee, any questions for Ms. Jackson?
Just an increase in food prices, I guess?
Pardon?
Is it because of an increase in food prices?
They require us, they, to use a PLE tool and tell us how much we need to increase every year. So we could really do more, because we're 33 cents under where we're supposed to be. But there's a 10-cent cap, and I feel like, I don't really wanna go more than that.
Sure.
Do they do it a little at a time, so it's not so hard for people with a lot of kids?
But they're the ones that regulate the national school program?
Yes, that's who funds us.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of approving this 10-cent increase? A good motion carries. Okay, then we have the milk bid from Prairie Farms. Sorry. Okay, so, we have a bid from Prairie Farms, their milk bid is $115,000, for the 2019, 2020 school year. Do I have a motion for that?
Aye.
Second. Thank you, Beth. Any questions about that then? Okay, all in favor of approving this bid, milk bid? Or just, I feel... Letter H has to do with approving the memorandum of understanding with the Lutheran family and children's services for the 2019, 2020 school year. Is our mental health conference? Any more for you? Thank you, Joan. The second, Beth. So something we do every year with this?
This would be the second year. One thing I didn't understand, and I'm just missing it, because I know it's like partially funded by Perry, but where's the remainder? Through the family.
It is, we pay nothing for that yet.
And they've been a wonderful service, I mean, for us.
Okay. Any other questions about approving this memorandum of understanding? All in favor of accepting it? There we go. Okay. Next item has to do with our resource officer agreement. I need a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 school year, the school resource officer agreement with Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. Okay, thank you, Renee. Beth, that hurts you too. So we'll put you to a second. Any questions about that? We've had the SRO for several years now. Any questions or issues?
Just actually, what's the yearly cost difference? The yearly cost, it was $67,000.
And we do have a different SRO?
We do, both are SRO from Councilor and Jefferson County.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of approving this contract agreement? Thank you very much. And then we have the same thing, but for the Hillsborough Police Department, the SRO. So a motion to approve entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Hillsborough Police Department for the 1920 school year. Thank you, Beth. This one's a little bit cheaper?
Yeah, it's a little bit more expensive than last year because Hillsborough Police Department has officers of security like this.
All in favor of approving this agreement with the Hillsborough Police Department? Motion carries. Okay. Okay, this is an agreement with our officials. So we need a motion to approve the originator of official contract agreement for boys and girls soccer, wrestling, boys and girls basketball, football, volleyball, baseball, softball. Thank you, Angie. Any questions about this? Okay, all in favor of approving this contract agreement for officials? Very good. carries as well. L has to do with an overnight stay. Our students need a motion to approve potential competitive opportunities for our state qualifying students or teams, including supervision for overnight travel and stay throughout the 2019. Thank you, Beth. And Angie? Sorry. I have my first, sorry. Any questions about that? We do this kind of as our little like that statement, right? Everybody good? Okay, all in favor of accepting this for overnight stays? Very good. Okay, next one has to do with authorizing the business office to make necessary payments through the end of June 30th to close out the year, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. So a motion to make necessary payments to close out the year for June 30th. I have a motion second. Thank you, Angie. Beth, were you in on that? Questions about that? All in favor of giving that authorization? Okay. All right. Next one is the big item on the list, the budget. So we'll start with a motion to approve the preliminary 2019, 2020 budget. I have a motion. Second, you. Okay, any questions about the budget? It's a pretty big document.
I have to mention the C7 is gonna be updated. Which will be updated after the DOD.
Okay. So we need names updated, is that what you said?
Well, it will with the new, with the new C7.
When they were on, that's why.
We'll update it until 2020.
Which is this year.
Oh, yeah.
Every month of the side.
Okay, very good. Any other questions about the budget for Kelly? She looked her head up this day of day.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve this preliminary budget. All in favor? All right, motion carries, thank you. Okay, and then the next one has to do with end of year budget adjustments for this current year. Okay. Thank you. Second, Beth. Make those adjustments by the end of the year. Any questions? All in favor of adjusting the entries? Thank you very much. Letter P. We need a motion to approve the completion of Phase 2 of the 3M Safety Security Film Project by awarding total tenting the project for a total of $74,995, and to be completed by August 2nd, 2019. Thank you, Angie. Any second? Beth? Any discussion about this issue, this item? So they had to move to... To get the...
No, we had approved this before.
Right.
There was an issue with the installer warranty, so we went back out to bid. So this is bringing that back forward.
Okay.
With the warranty act, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Who was the one that we had approved prior?
That was Tent Wright.
And that's who this is too?
This is total, this is total.
Oh, sorry. I see that. Okay.
And they were the, were they the local one?
These guys, well, the Tent Wright was the one that's really local. Total tenting actually is just in Clayton, so they're still in our neighborhood.
And the Midwest people were out of, Midwest people were out of what, Chicago?
They're out of Murray and Illinois area.
Oh, okay, Illinois.
Local enough, I can still drive there.
Yeah, I get there pretty easy.
That's it, I get lost. Okay, so the motion is to complete Phase 2 by using... So the motion is to complete Phase Two by using total tenting for the project this time. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries. Item Q is approving the elementary kitchen drainage replacement. I have to get there, hang on. We need a motion to void the contract to drain express for the base bid of twenty-three thousand dollars with the alternate bid not to exceed thirty thousand to replace the cast iron pipe scheduled forty PVC in the elementary and to be completed by July 17th, 2019. Seven?
They are very low.
And what, they are low? I have a second. Thank you. Any questions about replacing the kitchen drain? All in favor? Okay, all opposed? And abstained. So four. Okay. Okay. Moving on to desktop computer purchase. We have, we need a motion to approve the purchase of 126 desktop computers from CDWG for the high school and learning center staff.
I have a motion second.
Thank you, Angie. Second bet. Questions about those computers? Okay. All in favor of accepting, to approve the purchase of these computers? Okay. Then those were desktops, now we have approval to purchase Chromebooks. So we need a motion to approve the purchase of 379 Chromebooks from Firefly Computers for students at the high school, junior high, intermediate, primary, and learning center. Seven. Thank you. Renee? That's 379 Chromebooks. And again, this was in our budget. Or in the. Any discussion? All in favor? Just believe in this. Okay. The next item is really important. So we want, we want you to take a close look at this. This is the schedule of the meeting dates for the board. So I need a motion to approve the 2019-20 board of education meeting date as presented.
I may have a motion.
Thank you. I'll second that one. Notice there were some changes this time around and a few additional meetings added in case we need them for certain times of the year as well. The September one was moved to accommodate the conference. And of course Thanksgiving and Christmas is always a little different. And April because of the election. Any questions about those dates? August the 8th. Is all the rest of them?
Oh, I don't have time slot.
No, we don't.
But so. Well, normal.
I won't be here next week.
Okay. We're posted.
As well.
Yes. And hopefully the fan will give us a little printout of those, that is always helpful.
That will have me in the drawing room.
Yes, it's very helpful. All right. All in favor of approving these dates? Very good. Okay. Next item. The approval of board policy GDBDA, which is our support staff leave. This is something we talked about at the last meeting, if you'll recall. So you are given two options, I believe. Is that correct here?
I need to accept the second option that increases the days of fourteen paid holidays.
So it recognizes the fourteen paid holidays.
And designates or estimates those that could be used for makeup. Is that a good one?
Right. Okay. So the motion is to accept option number two, which recognizes fourteen paid holidays. Do I have? So Beth, she waited first. Do I have a second? Thank you, Joan. Discussion.
Also on that, there are the approving the leave days within that policy.
Right.
So is the motion, motion to approve the second option, which recognizes fourteen paid holidays and approve the change in leave? I don't want to tell you.
Okay.
Just that's included.
It's clear. Okay. A little more clarification is fine.
I just haven't been able to scroll down.
Okay. Everybody good? All right. So all in favor of approving this second option of the fourteen paid holidays? All right, very good. Motion carries. And then we have professional staff short-term leave. Has to do with. So we, I need a motion to approve the updates that relate to sick and personal leave days within the policy of GCBDA. Thank you, Beth and Joan. Any questions about those updates? All in favor of approving those updates? Okay. Very good. Okay. Need a motion to rescind board policy GCBDDAD, which is professional staff temporary disability sick leave, beginning with 2019-20 school year. Days that have been donated will be returned to the employees who donated them. An employee that currently owes days back to the bank due to use will be required to pay them back out of their current personal sick leave balance in accordance with board policy BF and it should be noted in the minutes. But that's our motion. Everybody? Joan, thank you. I'll second that one. So this is disabling our leave bank more or less.
Correct. Our, we had talked about that through our kind of a leak and fur process. Because we have, we had a support staff disvoted leave bank and that disbanded several years back. And currently they have a certified disability leave bank. One of the issues were, I don't want to call it antiquated, but there are issues that we have with it as a district is the setup of it is people donate to it, but when you leave, you get all your days back. So when you, when somebody has to access it, they're required to pay it back once they have acquired thirty days. We've had situations where you leave the district and they've never paid it back. So the district is absorbing all that cost. Which subsequently, the employees are absorbing that cost because it impacts the salary benefits and what the district has to be back there. One of the other things, as we move forward, is with our new leave policy and the stipend, the days are now worth a hundred dollars. So when you have, if somebody would donate that, they're giving up a hundred dollars, which is probably going to impact the number of donations. So returning those days is, there's not a large number of staff that have outstanding days that have to pay them back. And I'm saying I agree it's free to afford. And so we will work with them, not small amounts we'll pay them, but if it's a larger number, we may get there over like three years and try to come up with a resolution on that. So it's not to burden somebody, you know, if you had fifteen days and you owe twenty, but you were trying to build them up to where you also you don't have these days.
That you'll start getting repayment.
We're going to start getting repayment for that. And all the current donated days, like me, for example, I got like eleven or twelve donated days. They will go into my sick leave account. I'll make the transition on the job and then it will be no longer in sales. And the board policy BF is that emergency, they have to notate it in minutes. The reason it's an emergency is going into, all the G policies have to occur before July and I have to update all of the absent days. I gotta get the days back to people. When we do that, it'll summon prior to starting the school. So it's rescinding that policy. I included information in there as well. The staff voted on this as a part of their survey.
And I'd rather ask you this question when I talk to you, which I agree, this policy has been faulty ever since I've become a very good board member etc. It needs to be reworked. My concern is when you look at the survey, you've got ninety-seven staff members that still want something that, okay, if you add those that, you know, want to maintain versus, okay, dissolve this one, rework it, make it a good policy. There's ninety-seven. If the ones that just, oh, let's just get rid of totally is eighty-seven. So that was, that's my concern. I meant to ask that question and kind of talk to you about that the other day because you're right, this policy stinks. It was never set up properly.
Well, during kind of the leak and fur process, one of the members of the organization said they had an idea and I reached out to them late in May and then subsequently in early June, what's a suggestion? Is, and I don't have anything at this point. Nothing's been sent back to them. I think that this here is asking for this policy to be rescinded. Is during the nineteen-twenty school year, we won't have one at all. And, but employees are able to have bought short-term disability, long-term disability. And we can revisit like, all right, let's build a new one. If we, so choose to do that, what would that look like and do that over the next year to recreate one for the twenty? When life's. No, they don't have, they have the option to purchase it for themselves.
You want them not to get it though?
Oh, I don't, no, I don't have that.
Well, but this policy has been bad from the get-go.
Yeah, I mean, they have FMA, I mean, there's a lot of different. Good help. Okay, we don't have, one of the things that makes this policy hard, aside from the payback things, in some ways it promotes absenteeism. What I mean by that is this, is we can have an individual that has cancer and they've maybe been their first couple of years of teaching. In order to access the bank, you have to have zero days in the absent ten consecutive days. They may not have any days and just be needing to go to a tumor treatment. They don't qualify. And so unless they take ten straight days off. They're like, I want to come to work, but I can't. You know, some of those type of items. That's, yeah. But yeah, we can for sure look at it. It's just, we gotta break it down before we can build a backup.
It is my impression that if you add the two, out of the three questions, you had two of them together, it looks like they want something. We don't want that something looks like that.
That's interesting perspective, I didn't put those two together. That's a, I presume, I mean, I look at it that way.
I just don't know what that something is.
Well, because I was involved in putting mine together.
And who, is it the main department? Who would help structure something?
Well, we'll just put it out as whoever's interested. If you want to be a part of that process.
Put a committee together.
Absolutely. Yeah, and put something and then what's something that could work. And it could, and it could be probably the format that we use is something where you have, it's not a donation. If you're using the days, you're buying the days with two or three leave days. Which is, you know, if we made that donation, that many a day, it's a hundred bucks. That's how people proceed. So it'll be kind of interesting. It'll be, we'll send surveys out and hey, what's going to work? But it also has to be physically responsible for the district. And making it somewhat stringent so it's not, when we use the word abuse, it's typically, you have to make sure and protect yourself. Because I think that's happened in the past. There was two, there was a few people using it.
Well, back in the dark ages when this policy was first developed, the original intent was for people to help out someone who was going through a catastrophic situation. And they could donate some of their days to help them during that time. Because there was this specific teacher who was going through major cancer and we wanted to find ways to help them. So that was how it started.
That was a question I had, Jen. I sent this email with everything that you received to all of our teachers. We trained, I mean, because it's July, right? There is, hey, this is, we're taking to this board on Thursday. If you want to address the board company, visit, but also that they have, we can recruit visitors. And one person responded similar to what Ms. Walker just said. Hey, can we just donate?
Can we just donate?
If my friend's sick, can I give her four or five days if I have them and it's my choice? And maybe something like that, that'll be, we don't have a policy for that. Is, and maybe that's what it ends up being, but that's what we'll.
I mean, we have a policy at my employer. You know, when someone is out of time, they've had to exhaust all of their time. And then it's based on individual, if you want to donate how much. You know, I can go in my HR and say, I only have two days or something. I know I'm giving them away and I'm not going to allow that. That was the policy. But it was, it's kind of, you know, it's not, I'm going to feel more comfortable with that because I know they're truly willing through an stimulating circumstance. Not everybody has access to that day, right? I mean, I'd be more confident and know I'm giving it to them. But there are these. But I'd like to see a committee that can help, you know, to some great ideas. I mean, that's the only way I'm comfortable with it. Just because it looks like they do still want something.
So you want that in the motion? We need to say any or that in minutes about?
Well, I don't think we need a motion to do that.
Well, no. I was just checking.
They will do that.
Just put that in the.
Kind of like the curriculum, kind of pass it with the understanding.
Yeah.
There's an action item, there's some follow-up and.
Okay. So we have a motion then to rescind the board policy GCBDA. Okay, so we have a motion then to rescind Board Policy GCBDAD. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries.
Clarification, that'll be for something starting this next school year.
Right, right.
They won't have it next year.
Right, there won't be a weekend, but the following year. Or something.
Okay. So item X then? Okay, my computer just, it's crazy. I don't know what it did. There we go. So we're on the transportation, correct? Alright, so I need a motion to approve the recommended changes and restructuring within the Transportation Department. As, thank you, Renee. I am second. Any questions about that restructuring? Okay, all in favor of approving that restructuring in the Transportation Department? Very good, motion carries. Alright, and letter Y. It's not DD either, so that's a good one. Alright, so we have, I need a motion to approve compensating the activities athletics secretary on the central office secretary's salary schedule. Make a motion. Thank you.
Second.
Beth, was that you? Do we need any clarification on that? She has a lot of work. Just changing her on the page now.
So she actually moved.
No, just compensation.
Okay. So the motion is to approve compensation for the secretary, all in favor? Motion carries. We got a lot done, or did a lot, I guess. So the last one of the evening, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I made that motion second.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning the meeting? A little unanimous.